Good evening, welcome to the Village Board Meeting for the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, March 26. If you are watching live on Monday, March 26, we encourage you to call in. If you have comments or questions, the call-in number is (769) 1677. As always, you can catch us on Verizon or Cablevision Cable TV, Channel 76 for PCTV, 78 for the government channel on Cablevision, and 36 and 39 on Verizon. You can also catch us live or on-demand webcast at PCTV76.org. Our next scheduled meeting is a week from today, Monday, April 2, at 7:00 p.m. That's the unusual time for the once-a-year annual organizational meeting and installation of officers as well as new board members. So that is Monday, April 2, a week from today, at 7:00 p.m., not our usual 8:00. Our next regular meeting is Monday, April 9, at 8:00 p.m., with a work session at 7:00. And that April 9 meeting is also the occasion for the description of a public hearing on the tentative budget, about which I'll have more to say in a minute. So I had a few announcements to make, and the first and most important is that Election Day occurred last week, and at our organization meeting next week, we'll be welcoming Colleen Griffin-Wagner, seated here in the front row, to the Village Board of Trustees. So, thank you, Colleen. We look forward to welcoming you and seeing the fine service you've given the village over many years, translated into your life here in the Village Board. So that will be, again, a week from today, our regular, our annual organizational meeting. A few other things to report. One is, as I have mentioned before, we've had some retirements in the village, and last week had the occasion to celebrate and slightly roast our longstanding DPW superintendent, Steve Johnson, who is retiring at the end of this month, and we are sad to see him go, happy on his behalf for the trails he will follow from here on in, but on behalf of the Village Board, and I think on our behalf, we can speak on behalf of the whole village, Steve's 20-some-odd years of service here have been time very well spent, and he leaves this place, like most places he goes to, better than he found it. So, thank you, Steve, and we look forward to filling you in over the next several weeks as we make a decision about how to go forward with management and supervision of our DPW department. We're in the midst of that work right now. On Friday night, I attended a retirement dinner for George Waterbury. Some of you may know George. He has been for many, many years the town historian for the town of Mount Pleasant, and he is a lifelong Pleasantville resident, a Pleasantville High School graduate of the 30s, a decorated WWII aviator, and an anchor of the Mount Pleasant community for a very long time. George is about to celebrate, I guess, this summer, his 90th birthday, and decided to hang up his spurs as the town historian, and so it was a very nice opportunity to thank him for all he did, and also to make clear that he will continue to be called upon for his insight about the history of this fine place. So congratulations, George. Accolades well-earned. I mentioned once before, but will mention again, that the American Cancer Society is working with the student body at Pace University, and will do their annual Relay for Life. That's on, it starts on Friday, April 20, late in the day, and goes all night into the morning of Saturday, April 21, at the Goldstein Fitness Center. Anybody who's interested in participating, or maybe making a contribution, can go to www relayforlife.org/paceuniversity. I was there last year and will come again this year. A really great event, and one of those occasions when the Pace community and the village community and, in fact, the regional community come together in very positive ways. So that's Friday, April 20. Again, relayforlife.org/paceuniversity.
You gonna walk this time, or are you just gonna like?
I did. I would. I did.
I'll walk with you. You didn't ask me.
I'll outlast you.
Uh-uh.
The last thing I had on my list in the way of announcements was the Chamber of Commerce has done its annual poll of chamber members for the Businessperson of the Year, and this year's Businessperson of the Year has been selected. It's Bill Flukes, who owns Beechwood Funeral Home, and who is also the president of the Chamber of Commerce. And Bill is a member of the Lions Club, president of the Chamber of Commerce, contributor to almost everything anybody asks him to contribute to. So there will be a dinner coming up in the month of April to honor Bill.
It wasn't based on how much business he does either, so it should be noted.
The other two candidates, also great anchors of our retail and business community, were Matt Gerros from the Glass Onion and Melissa Prospero from Prospero's Winery. Both great people as well, and we will have an occasion in a month or so to honor Bill for this, but also to say thank you to Matt and to Melissa for all they do. So, anybody else have something they wanted to add to the list there? If you appropriate.
Just one thing. I had attended the Sawmill River Basin Advisory Board meeting for Patty at the county.
Is that Swabi?
Swabi. Swab. Jonathan would like to rename it Swabi. I don't know why, but.
Did she ever meet?
One of the things which we'll talk about, we were gonna talk about tonight later, but we probably should get the word out there, is the Great Sawmill River Cleanup in May, and more to come on that, and I think that we should be a participant there. It's a great event, and it's sponsored by an organization, which I am totally forgetting the name of. I think I have these notes in front of me. Do you remember Patty? The name of the group? Anyway, they bring a big barge up, and they supply all the materials, and you can get into the Sawmill River and pull out branches and clean things up, and seeing we have such a huge problem here, this may be a great event for our community and the Conservation Advisory Council. And it was, it's really, there's more to come on that. We'll discuss it.
I think it's Sawmill River Coalition, Amory Metrop's group?
It's Amory's group, but it's not Sawmill River Coalition. It's called something else. Hudson Valley.
Okay.
I forget the name. The other thing is, is that the person that spoke at this meeting was a representative from the Army Corps of Engineers, which was fascinating, and they have a new way of doing things. 3-3-3 Plan. And it's supposed to only take three years versus the standard six or seven that the Army Corps usually takes to. That was their policy. That wasn't, you know, I'm not making it up, but they're cutting down on the time. So it's, you can watch that online at the county, that whole meeting and her presentation, which would be very interesting.
Thank you for that. The other thing I wanted to touch on, as I mentioned, the April 9 meeting will be the occasion when Patty goes through and describes the tentative budget in detail and has a PowerPoint presentation about it. And at that time, we'll also talk quite a bit more about the genesis of the budget that is before us now, and the work we will be doing from here on in. The way the system works is that the tentative budget is posted by state law by March 20, and then we have a public hearing on it, which, as I mentioned, is April 9, which is an occasion for anybody who wants to weigh in on the subject to comment. They're, of course, welcome to catch any of us, or Colleen, our trustee, soon-to-be trustee, on the street, and let us know anything that's on your mind. You can take a look at the budget, if you're interested in it, on our website at Pleasantville-NY.gov and peruse it. The thing to remember is, this is a draft budget, and we'll be working on this over the month of April towards approval of the budget in its final form by the end of the month of April. So what you have before you now and is available on the website is the first cut at this, and there may be some changes made or not, depending on how it evolves. We fan out with each member of the board responsible for certain segments of the budget, and meet with the department heads and actually go through the budget on a line-by-line basis. But the sort of quick overview, which you'll hear more about from Patty on the 9th, is that the budget as currently proposed lives within the tax cap, although right exactly at the tax cap at the moment. Long calculation, but the bottom line is our allowable tax levy under the 2% tax cap is $9,444,930, and that is what is proposed in the tentative budget. It all translates to a tax rate increase of 2.87%. Again, a long calculation. The 2% tax cap doesn't mean that your taxes can't go up more than 2% based on a whole bunch of other factors and a couple of allowable exclusions. But the piece I wanted to make clear to people, for starters, is that our employee benefits, primarily the New York State pension and all, as the biggest piece of it, are going up about $190,000 this year, and yet our overall general fund appropriations are proposed at $13,286,000 as compared to the current fiscal year, $13,271,000. So that's about a $16,000 increase, despite the fact that we have a $190,000 increase in pension costs. So I think that makes clear that there's a serious effort going on here to trim in every way we can, and we will also be having the discussion over the next month about how this budget squares with the fiscal policies that we passed a little over a year ago as a guide towards our future planning and our use of contingency, our use of revenues that are not repeatable. But I do think it's fair to say, and I think I'm proud to say it, and can say it also on behalf of the board that preceded us, that the Village of Pleasantville has not been a place that has kicked the can down the road and said, "Let's not deal with the costs that we confront this year and see if we can get away with it." This has been a community that has always paid for what we had to pay for, and mostly paid for it upfront. That doesn't mean we don't have some serious issues down the road, just like everybody else does, but we'll describe them in greater detail on April 9. So I encourage you, if you're seriously interested, or even casually interested, or if you are looking for bedtime reading, to go to Pleasantville-NY.gov and download the tentative budget. Anybody want anything to add?
The name of the organization is Groundwork Hudson Valley.
Okay.
Sorry.
The other thing I'll say about the budget is that it does incorporate a large, a fairly large component of fund balance in various forms, and we need to get comfortable with that, that indeed, that we're gonna be, you know, responsibly using that, that in particular is $175,000 that we're gonna be using. It comes over from the Debt Service Fund, which, basically, there won't be a lot left after we do that, which means that between now and next year, we have to find $175,000 to fill that hole. And there may be, indeed, ways to do that, but that's gonna be one of the challenges of getting from this 2.87 to an actual 2.87 or lower between now and the end of April.
Thank you. All true. All right. Any comments from the public? Anybody wanna call in?[792.12][792.12](769) 1677. If not, we'll go ahead to the resolutions. Steve, number 47.
Resolved, pre-checked, registered, dated March 26, 2012. Covering check number 71839271920 has been reviewed and hereby approved as listed below. General fund, $190,034.18. The water fund, $103,581.58. Capital fund, $54,880.14. Refuge fund, $13,352.47. The pool fund, $486.51. Trust agency, $5,528.50. For a total of $367,862.38.
Is there a second?
Second?
Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved.
Resolved, the Board of Trustees has reviewed the minutes of the meeting held on Monday, March 12, and they are hereby approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or corrections?
You can still second.
You can still second.
I could second, and that just wasn't.
All in favor? Aye. Minutes approved. Jonathan, number 49.
Resolved, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby approves the request from the Lions Club to use Parkway Field for a Hole-in-One Tournament. This event is being sponsored by the Pleasantville Recreation Department.
Is there a second? Second. Thank you from Lions Club to work with us to do this. Patty, I saw the exchange that there is, nobody's digging any holes in turf?
We will not let them make divots. No divots.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Number 50.
Resolved, the Board of Trustees hereby approves the request from the Pleasantville International Association to use the gazebo at Memorial Plaza on Sunday, May 20, 2012, from noon until 2:00 p.m. for ticket sales in conjunction with their annual house and garden tour.
Is there a second?
Second.
PIA has done this for many years, skipped a year every now and again, but the PIA House Tour is Sunday, May 20. Ticket sales from noon to 2:00. Happy to cooperate. All in favor? Aye. Motion approved. Steve.
Whereas bids were advertised in the village's official newspaper for tree removal and pruning services, and whereas bids were received and opened on Friday, March 9, 2012, as follows: The low bidder was Ramos Tree Services at $8.50, and it ranged through $1,500 from Almstead, $1,656 care of trees, and $2,877 is a daily rate from Don's Tree Service. Now therefore be resolved, Board of Trustees hereby awards a bid for tree removal and pruning services to Ramos Tree Services, Inc., 49 Midland Terrace and Yonkers.
Is there a second?
Second.
Judy, emergency rate per hour, $2,285 with some of these bids?
We couldn't really quite figure out.
If they were thinking what we were thinking.
If they understood what this bid was all about, this thing.
It was our second time bidding it, so we're, you know, we're comfortable with Ramos. They're in Mount Pleasant. They've done a nice job in the town.
I mean, their daily rate of $8.50 is for what?
That's if we call them in advance.
One person, an entire crew?
Entire group.
We tell them we've got some work. Right. But if we have a storm and then we need them, it's $1.50 an hour, basically. So it's a different situation.
$1.50 per person?
Yeah. Well, yes. Well, depends on the spec.
I just, I'm sure you vetted this, but $8.50 as a daily rate for an eight-hour day for how many people and a truck?
We don't have the specs with us, Mayor, but we can share that with you.
All right. Whatever. You're just confident that we're getting what we think we're getting?
As good as you get.
I mean, certainly their bid is well below anybody else's, but somebody clearly misunderstood the emergency rate per hour, unless it's.
It's a difficult project to bid. Our old bid was even more confusing, so we modeled off the town of Mount Pleasant as per Steve Johnson's recommendation.
It seemed clear.
You know, it seemed very clear that this is what we were asking, so these numbers really just threw us for a loop. But we're gonna go, it's, you know.
Ramos is the current supplier in the town of Mount Pleasant, and the experience has been good.
Why did we throw the bids out the last time? I forgot.
Did we?
They were.
I'm trying to remember. It just, the whole concept of the bid design didn't make any sense for the services that we needed.
We couldn't compare them.
And they, right, impossible to compare apples to apples.
Still seems hard.
This looks like you can't compare them either.
I agree. It's the best that.
Well, we'll share the specs with you. It's very difficult to spec out the service. It just is.
Well, I mean, clearly somebody misunderstood here.
Yeah. I mean, if you wanna look at the specs, we can hold this over again, you know. It's up to you.
Well, if you're just gonna go by their daily rate, and we're awarding a bid for a daily rate, then we clearly have to, you know, award it to the lowest bidder, and that's clear. I don't think that there's any discrepancy. I think where they strayed was in the emergency rate, and that's a non-starter when you've already outbid yourself on the daily rate, so.
I mean, do we think it's a real team for $8.50? I mean, it's a, I missed Peter's question, how many people is that guarantee? I mean, it may be different. Maybe care of trees meant, you know, 15 people. I don't know. I mean, would.
No, it was men and equipment, or labor and equipment. We've specced it. We've specced it.
So you get more than a couple of guys and a pickup truck for this?
That's the bottom line. Well, you know, it depends what they bring on the scene, but whatever it is is.
Two guys and a couple axes.
Yeah. This is their package rate.
Right. And are specs specified?
Yeah. We'll share them with you. I just, I didn't think of bringing them, because we, this, you know, we do this every other two years, every two years?
Every two years. It's enough two years.
Is it necessary to pass this tonight in order to maintain continuity of the service? I just, I can't wrap my head around how the bids would come back this way.
No. You don't have to. Bring it up in a couple of weeks.
We'll hold over. I don't expect any storms.
I'm going to table this. Okay. Number 52, Middy.
Resolved, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby authorizes the village attorney to proceed with the settlement of certiorari petition by the Getty Petroleum Marketing as follow. For the year 2006 through 2011, the original assessment, all years, was $80,600. The corrected assessment, starting in 2006, was $72,548, with a reduction of $8,052 for a refund of $551.20. 2007 corrected assessment is $67,462, with a reduction of $13,138 for a refund of $930.82. 2008 corrected assessment, $65,100, with a reduction of $15,500 for a refund of $1,141.92. 2009 corrected assessment is $65,800, a reduction $14,720, for a refund of $1,111.41. 2010 corrected assessment, $62,330, reduction $18,270, for a refund of $1,458.59. And for the final year, 2011, the corrected assessment is $62,330. The reduction is $18,270 for a refund of $1,501.83, and the total refund is $6,695.77.
Could you go over that again?
Sure. If you didn't miss a spot, I could start at the beginning.
Is there a second?
I'm the fader. $500, not $300.
You know what, Jonathan? You probably wouldn't have been able to get through any of it.
So this is.
It was perfect, maybe.
This is the.
It's important that you know what a certiorari is going for here. I mean, this is.
$6,700.
Well, not only that, your assessment's down from $80,600 to $62,330. That's a huge reduction.
This is the property of one Pleasantville Road, the former Getty, now American?
That's correct.
So I have, we are in possession of a confidential memo from our tax cert attorney on this subject, and there are a couple of aspects of it that concern me, and so I would like to propose to table this and review it the next week.
I can read it again next week, just for you, Jonathan.
I look forward to it. Trustee for.
Yes. All in favor?
I will die.
We're tailing quite a few of these. You should do the next one.
How about this, Jonathan? Yes.
Just witness.
You know, no good deed goes untold.
That's right. You just witnessed how we, I really, I'll bet $500 on the amount of trips that you have there.
Oh, good Lord. Resolved, the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following budget amendments. Oh, jeez. Okay. We're gonna increase the amount in revenue code AO49, spot 4960, the FEMA account, by $30,075, to be distributed over a number of different lines. We're also going to, as set forth in the record, we're also going to increase line FO49, spot 4960, also a FEMA account, by $2,185, spread over three different sub-accounts, for a total of $32,260.
There's another page.
Yes. This one I'm not gonna get away from.
Spit it in the air, comes down on you.
Then to fund over-budget accounts, we're gonna be moving $6,851 from contingency to miscellaneous debt service, $651 from technology, software to miscellaneous charge debt service, $9,271 from contingency to the street administration and sick retirement payout, $1,440 from water administration to the vacation retirement buyout, $5,000 from health insurance to the vacation retirement buyout, $984 from Medicare reimbursements to the vacation or retirement buyout, $2,797 from health insurance to the sick retirement buyout, $1,524 from health insurance to, back to the vacation retirement buyout, and $1,580 from Medicare reimbursement to none other than the vacation retirement buyout account, for a grand total of $30,062.
Is there a second? A second. So these are transfers, in the first case, revenue that we got from FEMA.
That's correct. That's reimbursement from hurricane.
Right. Which is happy news. And, I mean, the case of the second page Jonathan read, mostly efforts to move money from accounts that had a positive balance to fund the payouts that are required as these employees have retired.
That's true. It's from various funds, general water and refuse.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Right.
Resolved, the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to sign the intermunicipal agreement with the town of Mount Pleasant for the Mount Pleasant Library Roof Repair Project.
Is there a second?
Second.
Patty, you wanna describe this?
So, we've had several presentations made to us by the Library Board of Trustees over the last two years regarding capital needs at the library facility, particularly the main branch, and what we have tonight is, I think, a compromise that was reached between the town council and this village board as to how far you wanna go at this point in time with some of the recommendations for their capital improvements, and we agreed to co-fund and pick up our proportionate share of the expenses attributed to repairing the roof and some mechanicals on the roof. Our obligation under this agreement would be approximately $144,840. I'll be talking with Tina Peretti at the town about financing this and see whether or not we should maybe go out onto one issue and we just pay as we pay now with our monthly payments toward our operating expenses we pay toward the debt service. That would save us both some money in issuing any type of note. But as it stands right now, we're obligated 34% of the cost of any improvements to the facilities, as we jointly own those facilities with Mount Pleasant.
Patty, didn't they get a grant for the roof?
They did, and this takes into account the proportionate share after that grant, after that grant's appropriated.
It was a matching grant, right? Wasn't it? I thought.
I don't think it was as high as the obligation we have, no.
No, it wasn't.
But it was substantial. I think maybe $240,000 in grant money.
It says $240,000.
It is, okay.
Where does it say that? The grant?
Oh, yeah, it does. I had it in the address.
The library budget offered to underwrite a grant in the amount of $240,000.
That's right.
And the good news also is that there are some other projects that the library had originally approached us with in the town, and they understood that these are tough times, they had some money in a fund balance, and they're going to use their own money for some of those capital projects, and that's why this is less than it could have been. So that's because of the good management of the library and John Furrow, the library board, so.
Their budget also came in.
We thanked them for that.
Their budget came in stable this year and did not affect our.
That's right.
Situation with respect to the tax caps.
I think it was a 0% increase.
We could be at that as well.
So the town's gonna bond this?
The town is going to definitely bond their proportionate share. I don't know how we're treating ours yet. We haven't really discussed it.
Right.
It's small. I mean, typically, our fiscal policy would compel us to pay out anything $100,000 or less in capital. This is over, but we can see what we want to do.
Well, it's probably to their advantage to bond a larger amount anyways.
Well, I think it would save money.
Yeah.
I mean, for both of us, since, you know, there are some attributions that we're paying for debt there, so if we're stuck.
And it's a 20-year roof, so there's, you know, there's a rationale not to burden taxpayers with all 20 years and one year, so.
Will they bond it or ban it?
I don't know their financial condition. I don't know what their policies are. Can't speak to that, but I'll find out.
Find out.
I mean, if they ban it.
I'm happy to talk to them about the bond market, too, if they wanna.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. That's the last of our resolutions. I wanted to mention a couple of other things that we have on our agenda for work session. We met earlier with our beautification committee, part of the rolling meetings we have, having to do with our budget, and they presented their annual budget, which is the same $15,000 budget they presented last year, for which they. last year, for which they produce all the remarkable plantings. They go on in the islands and the tree beds and the holidays and flowers in the pocket parks. Every one of us owes a debt of gratitude to the people on the beautification committee and most especially to Kathy Dinkle, who is the leader of that band, doing really, really remarkable work on an entirely volunteer basis, caring for the village and making so many areas look so much better than they did before beautification came on the scene some years back. So thank you to all of them. I wanted to mention a couple of other things. And one of them was that we have before us for a discussion and work session, a recommendation from our Public Safety Committee to eliminate three parking spaces adjacent to the senior center on Wheeler Avenue. So if you head down Wheeler between Chase Bank and Lucy's, these are the three spaces on the far left just before you make the turn to head up Clinton and in front of the senior center. So we are obviously always sad to lose any parking spaces, but it is a very narrow place on that street, and it's been a source of some significant complaints and a number of fender benders. And the Public Safety Committee has recommended to us that we eliminate three parking spaces. So that's one of the things we have on the agenda tonight for further discussion. We will be adjourning and heading into an executive session, furthering our interviews for the Department of Public Works Superintendent. Anybody else have anything else to add? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you all. We look forward to seeing you next week. Again, 7:00 p.m., not 8:00 for the annual organizational meeting, and then a week from that, back to our regular scheduled televised session at 8:00 p.m., which is the budget hearing. Thanks a lot.